There we go.
Okay, thank you so much to our technical people. Welcome everyone to our 3:00 PM Purchasing Policy Workshop. And I'm going to turn it over now to our county administrator.
Madam Chair, I'm going to hand it off to Ken Morris, who's going to get us going. I know he'll do this, but you know, I know you know Rashonda, and of course Darrell, but it's not every day that you get to meet our purchasing director. So Melanie, I know she's not nervous at all. She's ready to roll here. And but again, this was an item, Commissioner, that you all requested. And I'll hand it off to Ken, and he'll get us rolling.
Good afternoon again. A little winded, back-to-back workshops. It's been a while since we've done that. As the county administrator was saying, this workshop was requested by the board to review the proposed revisions to the county's purchasing policy. As you know, the purchasing policy governs the procurement of the supplies, the equipment, the services which support the county's operations to meet its responsibilities to the citizens on a daily basis. It basically touches every county department and just about everything we do. We brought an agenda item to the board in January seeking to make some updates to the purchasing policy. Routine exercise, which is a top-to-bottom review. It's been several years since we've done a major review and update to the policy. So in your materials, you'll see a lot of references to obsolete terms and changes to definitions and legal updates upon the recommendation of the county attorney. And we also took the opportunity to identify process improvements and some changes to the purchasing thresholds to reflect the current costs of goods and services. When we brought that item to the board in January, Commissioners, you provided direction to schedule the workshop. You wanted more time for discussion and consideration of the changes. Now, full disclosure, there's some people at this table that think the workshop is cursed, as this is our third attempt to have the workshop. You may recall, this was originally scheduled for May, and it subsequently was canceled following the tornadoes. It was rescheduled for late September, but Hurricane Helene had other plans. But we're here today. Joined at the table by several colleagues, including the county's purchasing director, Melanie Houli, who I'll hand it off to in a moment, provide a brief presentation. We also have the county's budget director, Rashonda Bradley, and Darrell Jones, our MBE director. In case the board has any purchasing adjacent questions, we wanted to have everybody here to answer any questions that you might have. The workshop materials go into great length to describe the proposed revisions. Melanie's presentation's, again, very brief. It's about eight slides, leaving the board ample time for questions and discussion. We've also provided in your attachments, because I know this has come up before, basically three versions of the policy. The proposed policy, the current policy, and the redline version, if you want to go through all the changes. But again, we'll cover all of this very quickly in Melanie's presentation. Take it away.
Hi. Happy to be here, finally. Like Ken said, I'm going to do a brief overview. I know it's riveting material, but I'm going to try to make it quick. I am going to go over the purchasing policy, the current procurement methods, and the suggested revisions. All right? So the reason we have a purchasing policy is to ensure best value, which is the most advantageous balance of price, quality, and performance, and to enhance vendor confidence through transparency and fairness. Another reason we have a purchasing policy for grant funding and applications. When we apply for a grant, there's significant amounts of questions regarding our procurement methods. The policy that we have defers to the most stringent of those requirements, so we're able to satisfy any procurement requirements. The current procurement methods are small purchases, which are for your everyday supplies, office supplies, small tools, quick services such as carpet cleaning. Those purchases, we usually use a P-card, which results in significant rebates. It was $95,000 in fiscal year '23. The purchasing quote threshold requires three competitive quotes. And in instances where it's possible, if an MWSBE vendor exists, we require that the staff request at least one quote from an MWBE vendor. The example of purchasing quotes would be furniture, software, minor facility repairs. Then we get into competitive sealed bid, which is the ones that usually come to you guys for approval. Invitation to bid is generally cost-based. It's only cost-based. Those are for continuing service agreements such as plumbing, painting, elevator maintenance, or construction projects like the library renovation or the Concord School. And like I said, we do bids for that. Solely cost-based, awarded on cost. RFPs, the Request for Proposals, are qualification-based. And we do RFPs for studies, professional services, architects, engineers, that type of project. And invitation to negotiate. We currently are doing an invitation to negotiate right now for your next-generation 911 system. We do an ITN when we're looking for a specific goal, and we want to establish a competitive range of qualified vendors to provide those services. There's also outliers, such as emergency purchases, single and sole source, cooperative purchasing. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the suggested revisions. The policy has a lot of redlines. If you're looking at the redline, it was mostly to restructure the document. There was a lot of duplications in processes. They were duplicated in each type of solicitation, which I felt was redundant. So I moved those around. They're only in there once, and they apply to all the solicitations. Stuff like general conditions, public notice requirements. We added some relevant definitions and removed obsolete definitions. There's some legal update language that I did in correspondence with legal for the E-Verify language to comply with Florida statute. Removal of the newspaper requirements in compliance with Florida statute and county ordinance. That should save us about $4,000 a year. We use the online advertising. We also updated the bid protest procedure to streamline the process and provide very specific timelines and evidentiary requirements. And we also apprised and defined the ITN process to adopt best practice. We are doing an ITN right now in compliance with Florida statute, but we don't have it appraised in our policy, which I felt was an important distinction to have it as a best practice in our policy. We also added some clarifications for categories that are exempt from competitive procurement. Just a general cleanup and clarification of existing exemptions. For instance, books for the library are exempt, but digital books are not. And that technology contemplated, software maintenance agreement, that type of stuff. We added employee recruitment services as an exemption for higher-level headhunter services that are kind of difficult to bid out. So we can use local headhunters for higher level. The process improvements. We went over them pretty thoroughly in the item, but we removed an obsolete field quote category. What that was, was it allowed divisions to go out and get quotes. I'd like to remove that and lower the three-quote thresholds in order to provide for increased purchasing oversight by the purchasing director. We haven't used that field quote process in a number of years. It's just simply outdated. We updated the informal bid process. We now use an online system called OpenGov to do all of our procurements. So we're able to utilize a sealed bid process for informal bids, whereas it used to be fax machine and relied on somebody sealing it. So I'd like to formalize that process. It's for smaller projects such as the tourism trail design or the Williams Landing floating dock. It's for low-cost continuing service agreements like root pruning. Just a sealed bid process that's sent out to local vendors for smaller procurements. We'd also like to add an informal bid process reserved for small business enterprise that is consistent with the joint MWSBE policy. We recently brought something to the board for the library roof replacement, which had been reserved for small business enterprises. And we expect that to increase opportunity for SBEs to do business with the county. The purchasing thresholds. This is on page seven, if you're looking at your headers, and page nine, if you're looking at your footer. The changes are reflected in bold in that graph, in that chart. I would like to increase the small purchase from $2,500 to $3,500. The last time that threshold was updated was in 2017. Like I said, those are your small purchases, your office supplies, getting your carpets cleaned, stuff like that. And then the related warehouse increase. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the warehouse program that we have for often-used items. We have a warehouse for public works. Purchasing quote requirement, like I said earlier, to decrease, just to counteract the removal of the field quotes. And this is the introduction of the informal bid process reserved for SBEs, like I was speaking about earlier. And increase to the non-contractual budget, or I'm sorry, blanket purchase order from $5,000 to $10,000. A blanket purchase order is essentially a method of payment. It's an open line of credit at an establishment that requires a purchase order. That would be something like for fleet. Clark Monroe needs to buy small, or fleet needs to buy small truck parts, so they have an open purchase order, so they can buy little, small parts. No single purchase would exceed the small purchase threshold. So it would just be little purchases. And it should lower administrative costs and avoid any P-card fees. Also, some of these vendors require that we have a purchase order. So to cut purchase orders for $8 and $10 for a part. And then lastly, the contract award and signature authority thresholds. I'm requesting to increase my signature threshold from $100,000 to $125,000, just to correlate with the increase of goods and services and allow execution of smaller contracts in a more timely manner. A $108,000 PO, I have to email the county administrator and ask for permission. And five years ago, that would have been an $80,000 PO. Board authority remains unchanged. County administrator authority remains unchanged. However, we are looking to add his signature authority for employee benefits agreements that are either zero-cost or time-sensitive for existing employee benefit agreements.
I'll just add on to that. The employee benefit agreements. So it would apply to benefit programs that don't cost the county money. So pet insurance would be an example. The county administrator has the authority to execute an agreement for the upcoming year for a new pet insurance program. Or if we're offering through Human Resources, a legal representation benefit. The authority would also extend to benefit programs with existing vendors that have been approved or funded through the board's budget process. So for example, this takes place in the fall months. For example, the board goes through the budget process in the spring and summer months. We know roughly what our increase in healthcare costs are going to be, say for healthcare, CHP, or Blue Cross. And then, given that they're an existing vendor, the approval of the tender approval of the budget would authorize the county administrator to execute that agreement with the existing vendor, if we were to go out and seek a new vendor that would require board approval.
Then that's really all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for your presentation. Yes, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we look at the second slide? Right there.
This one, okay.
Previous.
Next one, sorry. That one.
I'm sorry.
You want the chart, Commissioner?
I would look at three different. One was an invitation to bid. One was a...
Yeah.
RFP, RFQ, RFP.
It's on page nine of our...
The bottom.
I saw it was presented to us up on the screen I first saw it. I have my page seven. I have my page...
It's page nine, I believe.
The table.
Threshold.
Yeah. Is that it, Commissioner?
No, it was three items, the categories of which we made the invitation.
The bottom?
Yes, that's it. Thank you. The invitation. When does the bond, B-O-N-D, required for either of those categories? And when we utilize a bond for vendors to have to put up? Is that arbitrary? Is that regulated by state statute? Is that regulated by ordinance? Can you help me to understand? When is it that we require a bond?
Sure. It's in our policy at $200,000. But I have the option to remove that. And I would have to ask for county administrator approval, but it kicks in at $200,000.
So all expected procurements in the area in above $200,000 would require a bond? Could I ask Mr. Jones the question of, how does that bond requirement inhibit black businesses? How does it inhibit small businesses? And do you believe that that could be lifted to a higher number, given that the ask is for an increase for even the discretion of the purchasing director? Page nine, at the bottom, page 11 of 177. I'm sorry, page nine, at the bottom, page 11 of 177. For the agreement, the purchasing director to have thresholds up to 125, should it not be a requirement that the bond also go maybe up to $350,000, $400,000?
Well, as my colleague has described, oftentimes those bond requirements can be exempted at the approval of the county administrator. However, what we try to do is make certain that our firms are equipped with the bonding capacity they require by working with the FAMU Small Business Development Center, who has the outreaches with potential bonders who are able to bond our businesses. What we have seen, particularly as we're reserving more projects for our SBEs, one of the things that we do is connect them with that viable resource to provide the bonding capacity that we need on those particular projects.
Okay, so it no longer is an element of frustration for the vendor who's the minority?
Being able to make that connection with the FAMU Small Business Development Center and the varied options in terms of bond purveyors which are now available for our firms, I don't know that it remains that same level of consternation as it may have been in the past. But that's because we're making those resources most readily available through our certified firms.
Very good. How local are the dollars that we spend actually going back into this local community? And how much of our money is going outside of our community? And do you have the categories for which these investments of our local procurement dollars are going to?
All of the MWBE money, by definition, is local. To be an MWBE, you have to be located within the regional counties. I don't know that we divide or that we analyze how much of all of the overall procurement is local. Anecdotally, seeing what comes to the commission, even bigger projects, we don't see a lot of out-of-town vendors, except for the occasional 911 system, maybe a cybersecurity function. But a lot of your construction and contracting services are local. The overwhelming majority.
And to the county attorney, I don't think that this... We lean toward the legal bent, but we have been quite partial, as a board, in years past to an emphasis of our money's being spent locally. And is there anything that's prohibitive in law that annihilate our stance to encourage as much of our money to go to local area vendors that can provide services as possible? Is there anything in law that prohibits that continued path?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So if you're talking about competitive sealed solicitations, yes, because ITB is just cost. So if you have a vendor from Jacksonville who's $10,000 less than a local vendor, by virtue of the fact that the only thing that you can consider for that ITB is cost, you're going to go with the vendor in Jacksonville, because you're just going off of cost. Now, what we sometimes do with some of our solicitations is there is a criteria where for a local vendor, a local vendor can get some additional points, but you cannot consider that an ITB. So you could potentially consider an RFP, and you can consider a lot of things in an ITN. But depending on the procurement method, that may limit, in some instances, whether you can dictate whether you have to go with a local vendor or whether you go with, you know, whoever is the lowest cost.
Commissioners, I just believe that it's very important at this time for us to reiterate and reaffirm our desire for local tax dollars to extent possible to go back and to be reinvested into vendors who also pay taxes in our community. And I don't know if it's a policy thingy that we have stated anywhere, but without question, we are a local preference board looking out for our local vendors. I wanted to emphasize that. And I don't know if it should be in the policy or what.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Attorney, I'm sorry.
I believe the purchasing director also wanted to add some information for that.
We do have a 5% local preference in bids at a cap of $20,000. So depending on the cost of the bid, we could award to the higher bidder that's local, depending on the percent of the cost.
Very good. My final question off of page seven. The new category for bid, informal bid process for small business enterprise, that number you're suggesting is from $50,000 to $300,000. And I'm asking, is there any prohibitive basis or factors why that couldn't be $25,000 to $300,000?
I believe that number was figured by your committee?
Well, what we, as you'll recall when we made our MWBE utilization report to the county commission, it was very, very clear from the direction and instruction from this board was that you wanted us to be able to optimize more opportunities for minority women-owned firms to operate as primes. Subsequently, that's why we were able to set the thresholds, because based upon what we're witnessing in terms of the size of projects, we wanted to escalate that number to as high as potentially $300,000, because we see that will be opportunities for us to build capacity for those firms and be able to award to those firms directly. Our SBE program now qualifies both our minority women and local firms to compete for those without having to compete with firms that come out of market or compete with firms that may be of greater scale than what we find with our already-certified firms. So we followed the guidance that you've given us, and that's where we set those parameters up to as high as $300,000, so that we can optimize opportunities for awarding contracts as primes.
Okay. My point is in the opposite direction, not the ceiling, but the floor. I'm asking the floor be lowered to $25,000. I'm appreciative of whether the ceiling is at 300, super, but that the floor is at, instead of 50, why can't it be at 25?
Commissioner, if you look up two lines to the purchasing quotes, the ceiling for purchasing quotes is $50,000. So it's a different procurement process for things that are up to $50,000. Once you reach $50,000, you trigger the informal bid process. And for SBEs, we're going to go higher. In that informal bid process, we're going out seeking contractors exclusively that are SBEs. The library roof repair or replacement was a great example. That was a project that only certified SBEs could bid on, because it was up to $300,000.
And the good part is, for those procurements that are under $50,000, as was explained, one of those is reserved, one of those quotes must come from a certified MWBE.
Okay. Then my last question at this point is, in terms of companies who are integrated into the platform, such as... Right now, we're in open enrollment. And if I had an insurance company, minority-led insurance company, I want to be on the panel. I wanted to be on the panel of companies. I just have a lidded voice. It's just that much.
Ambitious.
You know, it's just what's on the inside. And I wanted my company to be, how is that factor for open enrollment in those kinds of... I guess you'd call them service agencies for not selling widgets, but those that are offering advice, advisory, or consultant, blah, blah, like that.
Each spring/summer, Human Resources uses its insurance broker to go out and see what service is available. Oftentimes, they'll survey employees to see, you know, what's the gap missing or what services would you like to see? Again, I keep mentioning pet services, legal services, long-term healthcare. There's just about everything under the sun when it comes to some of these extra benefit programs. But again, that's all carried by the employer that opts to, you know, have that coverage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate your questions, Commissioner Proctor. The one thing, it says the SBE, the informal bid process starts at $50,000, proposed threshold, $50,000, $300,000. We didn't have anything before. Mr. Jones, can you talk to me a little bit about... There's a difference between an SBE and MWBE, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that informal bid process is SBE, not MWBE?
Right. But our MBEs and our WBEs qualify as SBEs.
Okay, so all of them qualify as SBEs?
Yes.
So I'm going to be honest with you. My interest right now and my spidey senses are really pointing towards making sure that our MWBEs are participating in all levels here. And as I understand it, through what I'm looking at here, MWSBEs do participate in all threshold levels in the current and proposed, correct?
Yes.
And the percentages are ones of such that are aspirational goals in all of those?
Not on these projects. Well, actually, depending upon the size, we may very well ascribe aspirational goals. But because of the policy direction given by this commission, if an MBE or a WBE is awarded a project that has goals, they already qualify through self-performance. So an MBE would only be required to meet the WBE goal and vice versa.
Correct.
And that was policy direction
And that was policy direction given by this commission.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just got a quick question from an old IT guy. So the county uses OpenGov procurement as its, as its third-party procurement system, right? And I know we use it for the informal bids, and one of the revisions here is, is getting away from basically using OpenGov as a way to adopt the sealed bid process for informal bids, right?
Right.
What else do we use OpenGov for? Is it for the RFP posting as well?
We use it for all of our sealed bidding.
So when we talk about basically foregoing the publishing in the paper of bids, of RFPs, shifting to OpenGov entirely, which you're already doing, but just solely using that medium as a way to post RFPs?
We would also be advertising on column software, which is the notification public.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Sounds good. And lastly, I just, I wanted to thank our procurement director and everybody else for working on this. This is a lot of work that's been done on this. I know that you also met with the county attorney's office as well, just frequently, just to make sure that everything was airtight. So just wanted to thank you for all your work. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. On point? Is it on point? Commissioner Maddox?
I'm sorry, that was my first meal of the day, so. Now, on our purchasing, on our, on our RFPs and all that kind of stuff, there's a difference between, because just now when we were talking about the professional lobbying contract, the county administrator said that if we wanted a minority piece to that, we would have to specify it. So that difference exists in professional contracts and construction contracts, correct?
Aspirational goals, yes.
Aspirational goals. So there are no aspirational goals for professional contracts?
Yes, it's 6% and 5%.
How much?
It would be 6% MBE, 5% WBE.
Okay. Now, would that, would that cover like, like what we're talking about just now, the lobbying contracts, other professional contracts, or what kind of?
Well, the process for us is when we set goals, we look at the number of available certified firms, and if there is a level that rises to competition, like three or more, which I do believe is in that particular category, then goals can be ascribed.
Okay.
Commissioner, I'll just add, the existing lobbying contract you have now, which went out to bid many years ago, and, I'm sorry, went out to RFP many years ago, it did include a minority participation, aspirational goals.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to put words in the county administrator's mouth, but today you were discussing a very specific purpose, sort of a narrow scope and dollar amount. And so that was why that conversation came up about, do you want goals associated with that? Meaning, if you set aside 40,000, do you want all 40 going to a prime contractor? Do you want some of it going to an MBE? That's why we were looking for that analysis or that.
There is no, there is no status to anything we put out, it automatically has those goals on it. Like, some things we need, we would have to specify those goals?
We, well, through our process, through pre-solicitation, when we meet with the project manager based upon the scopes of work, is how we make the determination on what goals would be ascribed. Whether that they be an MBE goal, a WBE goal, sometimes they're an aggregate goal based upon the number of firms that we have certified through both our office as well as through the Office of Supplier Diversity.
Is there, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Your disparity study lays out different goals for different services. Architecture and engineering, construction, professional services.
Right, right.
But when we go and actually put the project out on the street, purchasing MWBE, do we really have something in this field? Do we really have enough certified MBEs, WBEs in our market that can respond to this? Sometimes the answer is no.
Sometimes yes.
And so we won't assign aspirational targets. Now, when that all comes back to the board for approval, we'll tell you, hey, this does not have aspirational goals because, either because the market's not there, or we're using state or federal monies and we're not allowed to assign aspirational goals to this project. But we always make that very clear in the agenda materials.
The commissioners take comfort in knowing that Ms. Hulley and I review each procurement before it hits the street to make that determination.
Madam Chair, final question. When we, when we, when we put out those RFPs and those contracts, those aspirational goals that we have, are there, is that a floor? Meaning, meaning let's say if we wanted--
They are the floor.
They are the floor. So we could, as a board, ask for a higher goal than what's inspired?
No, the goal is set by the disparity study, but respondents can respond higher than the aspirational goals.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor.
Madam Chair, I ask this question. Talas Housing Authority set goals that, and met, set and met. What, what does the Talas Housing Authority have, which the county of Leon does not have in terms of meeting such modest numbers that we set? I believe they set something like 35, 40, and met them. And the county sets like 4%, 5%, you know, peanuts, and struggle.
If I'm, if I may, and Ms. Brenda Williams has a public-private development whereby she is equipped to make that determination. We are bound by a disparity study that provides the legal defensibility for our program. And based upon that disparity study, that's how we ascribe those aspirational goals across those four procurement categories. And we're real happy that she chose to use our office to meet her supplier diversity demand. She used the firms that were certified through our office to meet that goal of 45%. Private industry can do that, but then they also run the risk without a disparity study of potentially being sued for having set those goals.
Well, I need to say that she's just blew out all the candles.
45%.
Anything that we've done. She's blown out all the candles on the things that we say that are not possible to be done. And right now, with respect to the limits and the narrow confines, what we have relative in construction to what she has done, it don't make sense. The vendors are there. Ms. Williams has shown us something, and our disparities study is not reflecting that same level of light and illumination on what's out there. And I think that right now, it's a suspect category to me. Our disparities study, Brenda makes it look totally suspect and unwarranted, and it's not an accurate portrayal of what one agency, whether private or public, but was able to set a standard, meet it. And the rest of us, you know, the sky is falling, can't be done. And we typically have our, again and again in this area, commissioners, our contractor's gonna, if you tell them 3.5%, they're not gonna go past. They won't come in with 3.75%. They could 3.5 and 3.449 and stop. They will stop at the very number every single time and do all that they can not exceed. There's no gratuity, if you will, in their commitment levels in minority participation. And I believe that we all, Talas Housing Authority has set a precedent that we need to look at, and maybe we need a new disparities study to, to, because our contractors are not generous in this area, they're not, they're not benevolent in this area, and they're going to do as little as is required. And they're faithful, they're good and faithful to doing as little and not exceeding. Could you count on one hand the number of times that our contractors have actually crossed the line of, you know, 7%, 9%? Be rare.
Well, Commissioner, for example, on construction projects, we have an aggregate goal of 23%, 14% MBE, 9% WBE. The beauty of what we are currently doing is that the disparity study, which is one of a kind in the nation, is that we have three jurisdictions all operating from the same sheet of music. As you recall, prior to my, to the consolidation of the MWBE program, there were county goals, there were blueprint goals, and there were city goals. Here now, that uniformity of goals, as well as a uniformity of a consolidated policy, means that every business who operates with our jurisdictions are all operating from the same sheet of music. That means that we are able to be even more efficient. We oftentimes see that our respondents, based upon the availability of our firms, particularly on our construction projects, do exceed that goal. And that's been because of relationships. People want to do business with people that they know, and we make a point of highlighting our firms. One of the things that we also do to raise and, raise the level of participation and drive down good faith, when she publishes her, excuse me, when the county publishes its procurements, we then contact our firms directly, our certified firms, so that they too are aware of those both subcontracting opportunities and prime contracting opportunities. So the program is certainly more robust because of that uniformity, because no matter how you enter into this procurement process, everybody's working on this, from the same sheet of music and from the same process.
And therein lies a tremendous problem for me because the process that we now have in place actually obfuscates what used to be a clear reality. And that is, for our two OEV, we could ask the question, what is the specific dollar that is spent with black businesses from the county? Or what is the specific dollar amount that is spent from the city's coffers? But to put the city spending, the county spending, and others who, whose numbers comprise the total, it does look more robust, you could say robust, but robust relative to what, I honestly can't track any longer, Leon County spending with black businesses that I am aware, which, the numbers of which, I'm aware of what the percentages were, around 2%. But in the new framework, our spending levels with women, with blacks, with other minorities is, is not trackable.
Actually, Commissioner, when I made our presentation earlier this year, we exceeded our goals. We had more than $8 million that was made available from the procurements that were identified with, for which we set aspirational goals. We exceeded the goal by 200% in one category, I believe it was 400% in another category, and that was just for county spending on projects for which of goals were applied.
I wish to see a breakdown, and I'd like to see as a policy measure, that we would encapsulate as policy, a continuing breakout of that there is no, this number, this statement is not meant with ill intent, but to make sure that clarity and distinction, that there is no collusion of city spending, county spending, and oversight.
No, no, sir.
I still want to see--
And we make separate reports to each jurisdiction. You'll recall that there was a receipt and file memorandum that highlighted both solely MWBE expenditures for blueprint projects. We provided a report directly to you all where we highlighted the amount of monies that were made available to minority-owned firms and how we exceeded the percentages, particularly in those categories of greatest operation, that is architecture and engineering and construction subcontracting. We also were able to highlight that there was an increase in the number of minority firms that were being selected as primes, far different than what we had reported previously because of the policy direction that you had provided. We are now segregating projects and identifying these projects for SBEs where they now are coming as, as the general contractor. So those types of, the policy direction that you have given us, we are now seeing that in response, and is subsequently being verified in the numbers that we're reporting to you annually.
That was in June, that annual report.
I'd like a copy, another copy of that.
Let me ask you this, let me just, this, Commissioner Proctor, they did give us that report.
I'd like--
Because the 400%, 200% of many, we got that report, and we lauded them for just making sure we had MBE and minority business and just women business, we had all that broken down.
Very good. May I please receive it?
Yeah, you can.
I'll forward that to you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. In the area of ethics, can a county commission do business with you all? I'm looking at the ethics policy and pondering relationships and how directly or how far, how many cousins over removed you'd have to be. Have we had issues in the area of insider trading with our monies, with employees? I guess friends are okay, but I'm talking about kinship. Is there any specific bar in terms of ethics in public contract in Section 12?
I don't, well, one of the things that we do for our program is when we have our mandatory pre-bid meetings where we formerly would only have the prime to attend, subcontractors are now invited to participate because we do realize it is about relationships. So when I, if I am Darryl Jones, a painter, and you're the prime respondent, if I show up at the mandatory pre-bid meeting, you don't have to use good faith because I've already told you that I'm available to respond on that project by virtue of my presence at the pre-bid meeting. We don't cite that as collusion, we cite that as a networking opportunity for our firms to be able to connect with the firms that we know will, because if it's a mandatory pre-bid meeting, anyone who responds to that bid has to be present. So if the subcontractors are present, the subcontractors know who the potential bid respondents will be, and they make themselves available and make that connection in real time on that occasion and in that space. And that is all born of the policy that we're providing today.
County attorney, we don't have a whistleblower protection for, in the section, for those persons who would be aware of conflicts of interest, habits and practices that otherwise might be prohibited. Can we possibly add a whistleblower protector section that those persons reporting such crude incidences could be protected and not be, suffer any retaliation or retribution?
Madam Attorney, I always said otherwise already covered by state and federal law.
Yeah, there's already whistleblower protection under state and federal law, so you could put it in the policy, but it would have to just mirror what's already law.
Absolutely. I'm standing at the seat.
It's preemptive, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a desire to see it, to tighten up this area that we've reviewed.
I'm so sorry. What was your last comment?
It's a desire to see that language placed here to protect our process further, that even if, because commissioners, we, we don't know what, but for those who may know, in the best situation to inform if there is any panky, panky, any collusion, any, you know, father, son, mother, daughter, we need that protection, security. It enhances our processes and that those persons so reporting would not suffer the consequences of retribution.
Madam County Attorney.
There could certainly be a provision that's placed in the purchasing policy that references the existing whistleblower law so that it's expressed in the policy. There's no problem with that.
Perfect.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I believe I have Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, those are good, good points by Commissioner Proctor, and perhaps at a, at a future meeting. Last question. Do we have an anonymous fraud or abuse reporting line already? We do? Okay. Then--
What was the question?
We do.
Do we have an anonymous fraud and abuse report line someone called? We do. Okay, good. Then I just want to quickly thank, thank the staff for doing this and for the board for bringing it up. I was skeptical about a purchasing workshop, but having been a department manager in an unnamed organization, trying to get things purchased while you're trying to run your operations, if it's too tight of internal controls, can be real difficult. And it's real easy for government agencies to just not look at changing and not looking at what keeps due diligence and effective internal controls to prevent abuse and fraud and non-compliance. But how much can we meet those limits and make sure our teams can operate and not spend a week back and forth with procurement, which I'm sure never happens here, that's somewhere else. So I just want to thank you all for that, and that it doesn't go unnoticed to me that you're balancing our controls and making sure our folks can operate efficiently.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Minor?
Ma'am, I have already spoken.
Oh, you, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Commissioner Caban, I believe you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go ahead and move for staff recommendation option one.
Thank you, is there, thank you, it's moved in second to staff recommendation option one. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. So I originally, I believe early this spring, brought to attention some of the purchasing policy items. The reason for that was, when this came before us with the board, it wasn't redlined. So we had several, several pages of old policy and then we had new policy. And after a day of having Allie, my aide over there, try to go through and see what had changed, it was very difficult. So I appreciate staff taking the time to kind of clarify what some of the changes are. Spoken with the county administrator, I've spoken with the county attorney. This is all, this is all kosher with me. You know, I do think that it's important that big purchases and bigger threshold decision-making still comes to the board. But I believe all of that is still in this item. And the changes are more minute and pertinent to staff's day-to-day operations. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Any other discussion? Let me ask you this, Commissioner Proctor and the, and the county attorney discussed that whistleblower protection. And I believe that is something that should be part of the motion to just have that reference in our purchasing policy.
Yes, ma'am, I didn't know if Commissioner Proctor wanted to make a motion for that himself or if you want to include it in. Yeah, okay, let's add it, add it to the, to the motion and it's all good with me.
Okay, is that okay, Commissioner Caban? Okay, great, great. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign. And let, before adjourn, let me just thank all of you all for all your hard work on this policy and for your presentations as well. Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Bradley, and of course, Ms. What, Holly? Hulley? Hulley, Hulley, okay, I thought that was my bad writing, Hulley, oh, okay. And of course, always, Mr. Darryl Jones, you guys do, do a great job. Thank you for cleaning up our purchasing policy and for the changes that are not real major. But I think it's something that we as county administrators need to be aware of. So I just wanted to give you my accolades on that. Okay, I got one brief comment from Commissioner Proctor.
On that whistleblower--
Whistleblower.
It's my thought that the county attorney would be the source of which the blowing would occur.
Oh, absolutely, it would be in conjunction, right, review with her, absolutely. Commissioner Caban?
I just would be remiss if I'd not point out that this is the last meeting you will gavel out as the chair. It is.
Is it?
And for you, and I, and I want to say, is that not accurate, Mr. County Administrator? This is the last meeting that she'll gavel out, right?
Well, unless you have a motion you'd like to make.
Oh, you said gavel out, okay. I'll gavel us in.
I just want to say that, you know, I've thoroughly enjoyed your leadership this last year. You know, you've done a phenomenal job and, you know, you kind of, kind of, you know, stepped it up a little bit from Commissioner Maddox from our first year, so. But yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Caban. I think in November I will gavel us in, right, but I won't gavel us out, is that right? Okay, okay, thank you guys for your attention, participation, input. And the meeting is now adjourned.